Good evening, welcome to tonight's meeting. Today is June eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen. The time is now six P M. Regular meeting of the City Council, City Attorney, and Alcon Order. Would you please rise for the vote. Les?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The last time when Mr. Trade Dad was here, he had a really nice place.
He did.
I've never seen one like that.
I'm sorry, mine can't compare.
Roll call, please.
Benado?
Here.
Goodall?
Here.
Criego?
Here.
Lopez?
Mete? Here.
Miles?
Here.
Rico?
Here. Item two, approval of the agenda, any changes? Motion, please. Motion to, uh, fill the agenda. Have a call vote, please.
Need a second.
Second.
Yeah, we do have a second. Second call. Rusty.
Benado?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Criego?
Yes.
Mete?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item three, policy items and staff reports. Greg, we want to discuss briefly the Trinidad work session, work session schedule.
Sure. This is, we listed quite a few things that have been discussed in the last few months as potential work session issues and department heads divided them into these coming dates. I saw it too, you wanted to move things around. That's fine.
Has Council had time to look over those and have any recommendations? What time are we proposing to do this?
At five o'clock.
Five o'clock. Okay. And these are all Mondays?
Yes.
The, uh, what's that pilot?
Piment and Luft, they're asking for that to be forgiven right now. They're thinking this.
Yeah, we had that discussion with, yeah, basically. Uh, the... Only one that I'm wondering about is the marijuana consumption law, especially the one that is coming up in two thousand and nineteen, that's when it begins. And I don't know, that would be the smoking rooms, is that what you're talking about here?
Yes.
To me, I read those two bills last week and there, it's going to take a lot of discussion then to be able to come up with the appropriate language moving forward with that, if we move forward with it. Uh, there is a lot of, a lot of stuff in there that we have to consider. So I'm not sure if that gives us enough time.
Well, I, like I suggested, um, a while back, a short time ago, um, I think this should be probably two or three different work sessions. However, um, as Debbie reported to you when she came here, um, MED is going to take up the rulemaking process of this law now, and that won't be until September. So that will affect some things. I don't, I don't know if it'll affect us that much because, um, it, it will govern how the state reacts to this type of stuff, but I think we can talk about how it affects local, um, issues long before that.
Two meetings in August and them going in September.
Yeah, I understand that the MED is going to do some rulemaking.
Correct.
And also, if I could add on to that, Mayor, I'm sorry for interrupting, but also to get guidance from all of you about what you're thinking is going to be allowable. Like, one of them is, uh, having, having sampling rooms in marijuana facilities. And I don't know if you're going to be, uh, you know, friendly to that idea. So there were consumption rooms, there were consumption facilities in restaurants, hotels potentially, and then sampling rooms in the retail marijuana facilities.
The way the law, you know, the bill needs, it's pretty extensive as to what our consideration could be, and what the MED decides to do as far as rulemaking and all that stuff.
I find it kind of odd, you can buy liquor in a liquor store, but you have to go to a bar to consume it. I can't serve liquor in my liquor store, but yet marijuana, they're proposing. There are about five other examples.
It's crazy. I can't imagine that ever being something that anyone would endorse. With the younger kids, twenty-one years old, about their fifth hot shot of sampling, and then getting in a car, how crazy. That's crazy.
That's why I say, you know, we've got, we've got working on this.
Maybe, real quick, maybe, do we wish to seek any input at all from marijuana industry or local to participate possibly in some of these to get some input from them?
I think it would be a good idea.
You could try Dixon. He's been good to the community. I guess others.
And also, it does begin, I believe, in two thousand and twenty. And everybody keeps telling me, we don't need a moratorium, we don't need a moratorium. I'm going to recommend that we have a moratorium until, unless until you say it's okay.
The other thing out here, and of course, I'm glad that, like I said, that's what the item's either recommended, is we really do need to begin to have a really thorough discussion on our infrastructure. And that's something that's been on our minds, and I think that we need to sit down and if that, there, again, I think it's going to take multiple meetings to come up with some strategic plan moving forward as to how we're going to address it, where do we start from. So I'm glad that we see that that's on there, so.
This is going to become funny, but what is moral character?
Moral character is to give you...
You're asking me.
Was it the context?
No, just kidding. We have had that discussion a number of times, and moral character is defined statutorily.
For licensing.
Yes, exactly. That's correct, yes. For licensing. That's right.
Would it be possible, or do you think it's important enough to talk about the binding of the code violations and code enforcement, because we've talked about that.
I do.
You do.
Enforcement violations?
Yeah. And penalties.
Just call it fees and fines and make it broad. We can give you a list of everything that we have.
Excellent. I think it's a good start. I mean, we can always tweak it as we grow along, but I like the setup and starting to have these so we can have discussions.
The July eighth, that creative district, and what we'll do, we'll probably have the creative district come in so we can begin a thorough discussion on how we're going to utilize that commercial space in the center.
I was just going to say, my, my only comment is, that looks like a fairly crowded agenda. There's a lot to discuss on the space to create, and it's kind of not something you want to break into three work sessions.
I wonder how...
Well, I think the first two fairly short discussions? Not necessarily. So, and, and they are ones that we really need to address fairly soon. The opt-out ordinance is the one that would allow people to opt out of the radio read meetings, and where we're already in the middle of starting to do that, we're going to have to have some sort of direction on this fairly quickly. And then the utility shut-off ordinance, um, the way current ordinance describes this, it's pretty broken, and we need to improve this dramatically. So, um, if anything, I would ask that those get moved up and other things get moved down.
Well, enough, for instance, on, and, yeah, I'm sorry, say that again, I didn't, I was thinking while you were talking.
If anything, I, those should be moved up and other things get moved down. My only concern is, is can we have it by June twenty-fourth? Is that too soon to have a discussion? We don't get the hand orders.
We can have it June twenty-fourth.
Yeah. So if you move those two up, you move down, that sounds relatively light, those blue light phones?
Those two down. I recommend those two, yeah.
Probably not, because we have to have an internal meeting on both issues, so. Because the only other way is they could get moved out two, three months.
No.
No.
And being out there in the midst of, you know, doing the meter installations, you know, it's a part that we get involved in.
Where are they? Fair and joining.
Creative District. I think we should probably have to...
I could hear you.
I think we should probably have to spend the time.
On the opt-out?
Yeah.
I, 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 oh, listen, with an open mind to what it presented, at first blush, I think...
There would have to be...
Nonsense.
You haven't seen the book of studies, and some great stuff, then you would understand.
Does it help, like, we'll be able to switch those out, or are we going to leave those for tech?
Well, I was just suggesting, if you want to spend more time on space to create, or space to create and create a district, you would have to take those other two off because they are potentially a little bit...
Yeah.
What if we were...
So if you move, like, blue light phones, um, I don't know what moral character is in terms of discussion. Okay, how about we, we move, the reason I'm doing this is, I've seen the exchange emails on the board members, because I'm, um, what's the Latin word, when you're a non-voting board member?
Uh, ex officio.
That's right, I'm ex officio on the board. Especially all the emails. And they are, they're about to be a very specific proposal that they want to discuss with, you know, with numbers and, uh, and sort of contract, um, and staffing that would help with all of this. So, um, a lot of work's going on, and I don't discourage it because we need to figure out what we're doing. That's, that's real simple.
Yep.
Because we're going to have fundraise for it and whatever. What if we move, is Trinidad Housing Authority laying? I know. Okay, blue light phones, and election, I assume blue light phones, isn't election items, charter amendments? We haven't received a whole lot of input on charter amendments. The only two that we've talked about is, you raised the thing on tourism, and I raised the one about the land bill as an enterprise.
You know, I was looking at, you know, we have that fifth week in, in July where we have two weeks of, uh, where we're not going to have a meeting, a regular meeting, but we do have a, the twenty-second is one of our work sessions. Uh, maybe we need to fill one in on the twenty-ninth. That's another week that's...
That's actually another day.
So we might be able to do that. So why don't you work around that, Greg, and then see, maybe it fits up.
Maybe the two, yeah. Maybe you take two, the two long ones in July, move them to the twenty-ninth. There's no, is, is there urgent family? No, I don't think so. Okay, and then move something into creative district, that, we shouldn't have the whole work session in creative district. Something immediate, what was that?
Utility shut-off?
Utility, does utility shut-off? No, we're going to move both of those to the twenty-ninth.
Okay.
So, how about, um, Trinidad Housing Authority pilot and blue light phones? Got that done, Greg?
Where are those being moved?
July eighth.
July forty-ninth.
The ordinances are being moved to the twenty-ninth, and then the Housing Authority pilot and blue light phones to the eighth.
Will be worked.
Okay, I think what we talked about, but anyone can object to it, is moving the AMI opt-out ordinance, the utility shut-off ordinance, to the twenty-ninth.
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth.
Okay, why are we sticking with the eighth? Why, why are we sticking with the eighth for the AMI? Just, I can't, I didn't hear why you didn't want to do that.
Okay, um, I'm concerned that it's a very crowded agenda because we need to really figure out what we're doing with creative district. We can't spread it out over three work sessions. Greg said that, um, it didn't need to be discussed by the eighth, and that's why I was, I was deciding the eighth, create another session to just do the, those two ordinances. What are your thoughts on that, Gerald?
I just, June, June twenty-fourth is really quick for us. We have to have an internal meeting with our foremen and our cashiers.
Okay, well, right now, you're scheduled on the eighth, so.
Right.
Okay, so, I thought, I thought we were talking about adding the last Tuesday in July, which is the twenty-ninth. Can we do it by the twenty-ninth?
Twenty-ninth would be better.
Yeah, because a lot. So, in review, utility, AMI opt-out ordinance, utility shut-off ordinance to July twenty-ninth, which is a new creative date, and then Trinidad Housing Authority pilot and blue light phones. Well, now, let's do election items, charter amendments, down to...
What creative district?
Creative district, yeah.
Okay, any other changes? That's good.
That's a good idea.
If that's a problem, Greg will email us and let us know.
All right, on to, uh, item four, petitions communication, oral written. Uh, four A, South Central Council of Governments Annual Report, Walden.
Good evening. For the record, I'm Walt Walden, Executive Director, South Central Council of Governments.
Well, there's a button underneath that on the right side if you want to lift it.
If you want to go over there. Same way as on that, but that's fine.
There you go. No more rousting.
Um, I, you've got a hard copy of our two thousand and eighteen annual, um, report in review. I would just like to go through a summary of it with you tonight. As one of the founders of South Central Council of Governments, every year Trinidad invests thirteen thousand dollars in South Central Council of Governments. And I hope that report gives you a glimpse of what your investment means to Trinidad and the surrounding areas. Through federal, state, and local grants and contracts, we're able to leverage that thirteen thousand dollars in two thousand and eighteen to a seven million eight hundred, seven million eighty-eight thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollar budget. We are one of the larger employers in the area, and in two thousand and eighteen, we had a payroll, overall payroll of three million, two hundred and thirty-one thousand. Of that, two million, one hundred and forty-two was in Los Angeles County and that, in that area. We had a hundred and eighty-six employees in Los Angeles County and another hundred and nineteen employees in Orphanoe County, for a total of three hundred and five. Um, some of our programs that we talked about in report care services is one of our, um, larger programs, and that would be where we go into people's homes and provide the non-medical assistance so that they basically don't have to move into a nursing home. Uh, in Los Angeles County, in two thousand and eighteen, we served a hundred and fifty-seven clients in that program, providing, uh, seventy-five thousand eight hundred and twenty-one hours of service for those individuals. Uh, I'm not going to go through the Orphanoe County stuff, I'm focusing on, if that's also in the report so that we can compare, but basically, it's about, um, two to one as far as the way our budget splits across the two counties, so about two-thirds of it in Los Angeles County, a third of it in Orphanoe County. Area agency on aging is another one of our, um, free-year programs, in that we provide a multitude of services to seniors in the community. Uh, probably the best known is the meals that we serve at the senior center. In two thousand and eighteen, at the H R S A R Senior Center, we prepared thirty-two thousand seven hundred and ninety-one meals. Uh, of those, ten thousand four hundred and fifty-nine were eaten there at the senior center. We then, uh, delivered meals to Aguilar, nine hundred and thirteen, and another eleven, or seventeen hundred and forty to Segundo. Uh, we also do the delivery of home, or those meals to those who can't get to the senior center, and we did nineteen thousand six hundred and seventy-nine meals, meal deliveries during two thousand and eighteen. That's an average of sixteen hundred and forty a month. Uh, AAA also helps pay for some of the services that, um, seniors may need and can't afford to get, one of which is transportation. So, uh, AAA helped pay for trips, four, four thousand one hundred and seventy-two trips in, for Trinidad in COGS, um, transport, transportation program. That was three hundred and forty-eight clients. Uh, they also help pay for things such as dental vision and hearing assistance. Of that, they paid for a hundred units, uh, legal aid, thirty units, disease prevention and health promotion, sixty-six units, and for the visually impaired, twenty-five units. And then AAA also works on care to share. It's not officially under them, but we took that over when the county asked us to, where we provide additional meals out to fairgrounds. We started doing that in June, and since then, we have done two thousand one hundred and twelve senior boxes, averaging a hundred and sixty, a hundred and seventy-six per month that we give out to individuals who go out to the fairgrounds for food. We have a housing program where we provide low interest to, to low interest loans for, um, those who can't qual, either can't qualify for a standard loan, and usually it's for things such as wheelchair ramps, widening doors, making bathrooms ADA accessible. Um, in Los Angeles County, we gave out eighty-six thousand dollars worth of loans in that program, and then we do a, a kind of a parallel program, a toll modification, and we did sixty-nine thousand five hundred dollars worth of loans in Los Angeles County in that program. Probably one of the programs that people know about the most is our transit program, because you see the buses driving around all the time. In two thousand and eighteen, we purchased two Chrysler Pacifica electric vehicles to add to our fleet of five existing C and G vehicles. So our transit program is really focused on trying to have the least amount of impact on our environment as possible. So we have a fleet of seven vehicles now, or in two thousand and eighteen, we actually just bought our eighth. There was a total of eighty-seven thousand four hundred and twenty-three miles, which was forty-eight point eight percent of our, um, total miles were with our C and G or electric vehicles. That displaced six thousand six hundred and eighty-six gallons of gasoline, and it reduced the greenhouse emissions by fourteen tons. Um, Los Angeles County, we did five hundred and thirty-one unique passengers for twenty-one thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven trips. Uh, we also did three hundred and thirteen trips to Ratone and fourteen hundred and ten trips to, um, Pueblo. And most of those Pueblo trips are to get to ambulances actually to Ratone for medical services for those who can't get up to their doctors. We have an early learning center. Um, we actually in two thousand and eighteen bought out a daycare up in Walsenburg, so we now have early learning centers in both counties. We served a hundred and seventy-seven children in two thousand and eighteen. And we think about, I mean, this is more than daycare, but we, we think about the early learning center providing that learning opportunity for those young people. What we don't think about is that we also feed them. We prepared a hundred and twenty-two thousand meals in our kitchen for the E L C for those children. Uh, we are also the representatives for the State Transportation Region, Planning Region, uh, which basically helps let C dot know what the priorities are for the south, south central area for transportation. In two thousand and eighteen, C dot spent nine million five hundred and twenty-five thousand eight hundred and four dollars in South Central Colorado. Um, we are also, we also started a planning process which is looking at bicycle and hiking trails that will link Trinidad all the way to Walsenburg, and that's a million-dollar study, it'll take eight, two months. They'll come back with recommendations on how to fund and how to build a program that will allow us to develop those trails all the way connecting, which really is going to integrate well with what the city's doing with Fisher's Peak, and potentially has good potential to really tag Trinidad and Trinidad area as a recreational hotspot for the rest of the nation. Um, the last thing, uh, is that we do economic development, and we are the administrator for the enterprise zones for South Central Colorado, and that is where, under certain categories, depending on how many jobs you create or the money you invest in a program or for nonprofits, if you can show that your nonprofit brings tourists, let's say, into the area, then you can qualify tax for tax credits that can equal up to twenty-five percent of your investment. Um, and in that, in Los Angeles County, last year, the investment that used tax credits equaled a hundred and forty-seven million, three hundred and thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and ninety-three dollars worth of investments across just Los Angeles County. That's a twenty-seven point eight-three percent increase over two thousand and seventeen. So those are just investments that tapped into the, um, enterprise home tax credits. So that's what you got for your thirteen thousand dollars.
Sounds like a bargaining, Walt. Sounds like a bargaining.
I've got a question for you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, has COGS, uh, have they tried to team up with, uh, with, with younger children such as disability, kids with disability and autism anymore, since that one meeting we had two years ago? That, uh, it seemed like, it seemed like, uh, COGS and you were very interested in helping and moving forward with children with autism and certain disabilities, and it seemed like, you threw a lot of numbers there, and you threw a lot of money at us, but, uh, I was just wondering, have you tried to form that again or not?
Well, quite honestly, we're very open to that. Um, we were just trying to facilitate a dialogue to figure out for those who were, um, really the movement shakers and movers, which is the families, quite honestly, on how do we put that into some kind of a, uh, developed funding for it? We looked at, you know, what kind of programs it could be, and after the second meeting, we just, we couldn't get the people back together, the funding, so we are absolutely still open to that. Now, for the early learning center, we take children with disabilities on a, on a consistent basis, and we tie into the, the state who actually gives us additional money to take those individuals into our classrooms, because typically, if you take one, especially a child maybe with autism, you, for every child we take in, we have to add an assistant in that classroom, so the state helps pay for that. So I, I knew that, I know that's still on your radar screen, and it's certainly on ours, but quite honestly, we just don't have the, I guess, the cohesion that we thought we had.
I think you have to have the energy, if I may say this, I think you should have the energy from the top, from, to try to move forward with this. I think there's a lot of people that, that they know they want to have this, try to care or try to help care, but they don't know what to do. You're the type of man that's in the position that, that has the power and then has the mentality that could push this forward. And, and, and as a councilman, all I'm asking you is that, just try to get this back together. Just try to move this forward. Use your, use your, I don't want to say power, but use your, your, your position to try to get this done in this town. There's a lot of people, not only here in Trinidad, but in Orphanoe County and stuff like that. So, you know, you're seeing all these dollars flying out, they serve all these meals, they serve all this money, it's a great thing for our senior citizens too, but the lack of, I think, uh, of our children being not taken care of is, is kind of important to us.
Well, I would be happy to reach... children with disabilities on a, on a consistent basis, and we tie into the state, who actually gives us additional money to take those individuals into our classrooms. Because typically, if you take one, especially a child maybe with autism, for every child we take in, we have to add an assistant in that classroom. So the state helps pay for that. So I, I knew that, I know that's still on your radar screen, and it's certainly on ours, but quite honestly, we just don't have the, I guess, the wish that we thought we had.
I think you have to have the energy, if I may say this. I think you should have the energy from the top, from, to try to move forward with this. I think there's a lot of people that, that they know, they want to have this, try to care, or try to help care, but they don't know what to do. You're the type of man that's in the position that, that has the power and then has the mentality that could push this forward. And as a councilman, all I'm asking you is that, just try to get this back together. Just try to move this forward. Use your, use your, I don't want to say power, but use your, your, your position to try to get this done in this town. There's a lot of people, not only here in Trinidad, but in Waltham County and stuff like that. So, you know, you're seeing all these dollars flying out, they serve all these meals, they serve all this money. It's a great thing for our senior citizens, too. But the lack of, I think, of our children being not taken care of is, is kind of important to us.
Well, I would happy to reach out and try to facilitate another, another program. And maybe with some of the changes in the state, as far as the way they're focusing their money towards younger people, we might have an opportunity now to actually get some funding that we could direct.
That's the opportunity then we have to try to jump on before it goes off the rails again.
So yes, thank you. I mean, absolutely. I'll reach back out to you, and we'll see if we can't put together another, another with the families, or some of the providers.
Well, I have a couple of things. You know, one thing that I see in the reports, the good reports, however, there's no revenue showing for department, in each department, what that, what each department, you know, contributes to the overall report.
Give me as far as each of the individual budgets?
Yes.
Now, we didn't go through the budget. We do, our, our budget is on our website, but there's access to that.
The other thing that I was noticing is that, you know, the enterprise zone's done well, the early learning centers have done well, I think, a number of mills have served for the already seems to be doing well. But what I'm concerned about is the HCVS program and the housing program. From what I've seen is that there's a tremendous, from two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and eighteen, there is a twenty-five percent loss of the number of people being served.
Right.
So that's a concern, and of course, there's probably reasons behind it, but I just want you to know that that's a.
Well, it's probably a reason you've heard of before. We actually leave a lot of money on the table in, in both counties, in Waltham County in particular, because we can't find the workforce. We have referrals from DHS consistently, and we, like everybody else, we do the advertising for the workers, and we cannot get enough workers to fill all those positions. So we're very aware of the fact that we are not able to serve the community the way that we need to. Any, any suggestions on how we could find or cajole or get people to move back down here to where we could fill those spots? We would love to.
You know, I do know that the, your HCVS is your program that contributes a huge majority of the funding to the entire COGS program.
It hasn't, it certainly hasn't passed.
I'm not sure where it's at right now. I'm not sure where it's at right now, as far as general or reimbursement, where it's at. So I don't know where that's at.
So we would love to be, I mean, we are absolutely, we, we know that for certain. I mean, there are some months that we, we have referrals from DHS that would be twenty or thirty people that we can't serve, that just absolutely cannot find the workforce.
Of those that you're serving, the collection part of it, is it going well, or is it doing well?
The collection part?
The collection part, the reimbursement of what you're building out.
We're, we're getting, almost ninety, over ninety percent of everything. So reimbursement part of it's going well. That's, that's not been an issue anymore for us. It's just a matter of actually finding the workers to do the work.
Right.
Other, other questions?
Thank you.
Well done.
Thank you, Walter.
Having a hard cover on this was great. Instead of just what's in our packet.
Okay, item five, consent agenda, approval of the minutes, regular meeting minutes of June fourth, two thousand and nineteen.
Did anyone sign it? Was that the part we just?
I asked you, I forgot to ask. Do we have anybody signed in this week? Thanks. Don't mind me.
I was thinking, wait.
We're missing a part.
Yes, sir.
Nobody?
All right.
All right, item five, consent agenda approval. Item five, A, approval of the regular meeting minutes of June fourth, two thousand and nineteen. Approval of the bills, which is one million, four hundred and seventy-one thousand, nine hundred and sixty-three dollars and ninety-one cents. Item C, approval of payroll, June fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen, through June eighth, June twenty-eighth, two thousand and nineteen, which is three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, sixteen dollars and ninety-one cents, which is included in the actual amount of the bills as well. Motion, please?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
Second.
Any other discussion on it? Call a vote?
Benado?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Griggo?
Yes.
Yes, with the exception of the minutes as I wasn't here.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item six, public hearings. Item six A, a public hearing for consideration of an ordinance authorizing the conveyance of certain real property owned by the city of Trinidad to Isaac and Irene and Beta. Hearing is now open. Anybody have any information on that?
Thank you, Mayor, and Mr. Council. Just a brief recap. We talked about this the first reading. Back in nineteen seventy-one, the county commissioners disposed of over twenty-some properties to the city, and they just deeded them over to the city, based on probably unpaid taxes. Well, came to light when Mr. and Mrs. Beta came to the city, and they were trying to get a loan on their property. This twenty-foot strip that we're talking about sits right between their two properties that they, they own. So we have this twenty-foot strip that was deeded to us by the commissioners. We've never used it, we've never even maintained it. They have actually used it, maintained it. So it was my recommendation that we just deeded over.
Anyone have the audios to speak for the ordinance or against the ordinance? Hearing's closed. Item six, city one, second reading of the ordinance authorizing, authorizing the conveyance of certain real property owned by the city of Trinidad to Isaac and Irene and Beta. A motion, please?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any additional discussion? None? Call a vote, please?
Benado?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Griggo?
Yes.
McTay?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item seven, we have more unfinished business. Item eight, miscellaneous business. A, report to development agreement and cost share, cost share agreement. Could I have a motion, please?
No, I don't want you to think.
You don't pay a motion? You just, you have some discussion on it, or you wanted to discuss?
Yes. Because we just received the most recently marked-up agreements at about noon today, and I got the exhibits, I think, after one, two o'clock, something like that. I just don't think you have had enough time to review these. And so what I ask you to do is read these over the next week. If you have any questions, comments, anything like that, pass them on to me. I'd be able, I, I probably could respond to most of them. If I can't, I'll share them with Malcolm and get an attorney's opinion on them. And then, if possible, schedule right at the beginning of the meeting, the work session next Monday, schedule a meeting that you can just make a decision on the agreements. Does that sound reasonable?
It's very me.
Yeah.
Should we take a motion to table this item, because it's on the agenda? I move to table the item. Okay, second?
Second.
Okay. Call a vote, please?
Benado?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Griggo?
Yes.
McTay?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Secondly, now that we have these, and they're in the form they're in, do any of you have any objection to signing the DOLA agreement, the DOLA contract? I, I think we can easily do that at this point, if this happens to be a recommendation. So if you have no objection, we'll just sign that. Because they're pushing pretty hard to get it on.
Yes. Well, time's ticking on that, before that has to be executed, or we'll lose that.
It's the end of July is the dead end, but we are, we are hoping to testify on the next DOLA grant, probably the twenty-third to the twenty-fifth of July. So if this doesn't get signed, it would put them in jeopardy also.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have to vote on that?
Thank you.
Again, you know, Mr. Son, the authority to sign the DOLA?
It's either me or, probably the mayor would sign it.
Well, I think we need to probably vote.
I think you should. Harder? Do we need a motion on that?
Well, you can't do that just now.
It's not on the agenda.
Yeah, it's not on the agenda, but I need to go back and see. Was the DOLA grant party approved anyhow?
I think it was, yeah.
I think it was.
I think we've just withheld signature on it.
Yeah.
Oh, so you're saying.
So let me double check, and if that's the case, we'll just have the mayor sign it. And if it's not the case, then we'll have to.
Just a signature, that's, goes on that one? Okay, item nine, council reports. Mr. Benado? Okay, good. Question?
I have nothing. Life is great.
Tom, you may get out of here early, like you're.
It's time to catch this. Just one item, which is that I went on the tour that was led by Cy Michaels. We hosted the Pueblo Chieftain. The idea was to try and talk to them about maybe having some sort of regular column or thing saying what is going on in Trinidad. And I understand, I wasn't part of those discussions, but I understand it went well, maybe I'll need that for you. But we really had a delightful time on the tour. And I saw parts of Trinidad I hadn't seen, and advantages of the lake and the mountains that I hadn't seen before. And I think everyone had a nice time. My compliments to Cy. She is a wonderful tour guide. And anyway, that's what I got.
Okay. Just a couple of, of small items. Phil and I, and I guess we were the only two, the only two of the, I kept a program of the Korean Ambassador's piecemeal ceremony. That was very impressive. Phil, I'm sure Phil wants to talk about it as well. But I was impressed that there was, had to be at least a dozen South Korean, they're not citizens, they're citizens of this country, but they were, they're, they're, yeah, their origins in South Korea. And what was really interesting, if, if anybody wants to see this, the number of men that served in that war that lived in this area is amazing. But it was an impromptu speech, but it hit me the hardest, because what happened is, at the end of the, of the preparers programs, this gentleman, that some of them were from Colorado Springs, some were from Denver, but this gentleman got up and started talking about when he was a year old, and where the North Koreans were coming after his parents' house, and his mother picked him up early in the morning and put him on his, on his, on her back and started running. And when they were running, it was just lucky for them that the troops, the American troops were coming toward them. And he said, I am living proof of what these, these gentlemen did. I'm here because of these people. And it was, it was really interesting. It was very, at the, what is the gentleman's real, he's the Korean consulate, General Jun Young Park. What a nice individual, and very well-sitting. The, the South Korean people that were there were just so polite, so happy to be here. It was really, I'm, I'm so glad that I got to go. And I did the Mount Carmel Pueblo Chieftain tour as well. And we tried to talk up Trinidad as much as we could. And I think it's going to be a good partnership.
By the way, Alan, I thought Greg did a real good job to keep sharing the tour guide.
Okay.
That's good.
Yes, I am.
Here we go. In what may be a one-man arm wrestle, I'm going to do it anyway. I was in here last meeting, when apparently Mr. Monahan thought it appropriate to address my comments relative to ambulance service, but never letting go as I don't. I'm going to take this shot tonight for whatever it's worth. Thank you, Mr. Murphy, for giving me the opportunity to do that as best I could with video and audio and so forth when I was last here. November twel- uh, seventeenth, nineteen fifty-seven, was Friday, and it was my first experience with an ambulance. I was five years old. My grandfather, who lived with us, had a cerebral injury and was dying at home. He needed to be transported, so my mother arranged for an ambulance to come, which at the time was administered by Malar Funeral Home. The ambulance arrived, I was quite amazed to be five years old. By the way, they had put me up on the counter, so I stayed the hell out of everybody's way, as my grandfather was ill.
You're giving us ideas.
Yeah, I know. And, and what the point is, is their family was hustling about, and all we ever wanted and needed was medical service and transportation. But when that ambulance arrived, it was a turquoise and white Cadillac. It was staffed by Steve Comey and Doc Jordan. Doc Jordan was not a medical doctor, he was an embalmer, but everybody called him Doc Jordan. I remember when they brought the gurney in to, to gather up my grandfather. It had a maroon chenille spread on it, which is ingrained in my mind, with white lettering, which I couldn't read, but I later learned spelled Malaris. There was a beacon light in the center of the roof of that ambulance, and every time it flashed around red, it lit up the kitchen. And there was a thunder mounted inside of it. And all we wanted at that time was emergency medical service and transportation. And we got it. Next was a mine accident in the early sixties in Valdez, when an ambulance was called to the Frederick Mine to transport my dad, who'd been injured in a coal mine, for medical assistance. I don't remember that one as vividly, because I was not, had an active part in it as I guess this person. But there again, all we wanted was medical assistance and transportation. Next, when I was school age, there was a string of car wrecks. You may remember, Phil, our, our school buddies were killed in car wrecks. Friends of mine were injured in them. Many of them died, as we know. And at that time, all we wanted was medical assistance and transportation. In nineteen seventy-seven, I began working with State Patrol, and I was training with Dal Padilla, when an Amtrak train eastbound to Chicago collided with a pickup truck that was abandoned on a railroad tracks at Dalhuy. They were still in railroad ties and got high-centered left of the truck, unbeknownst to the train. That impact resulted in probably nine rail cars being derailed, passenger cars. Mass casualties, it was unbelievable. Every ambulance in the area, southeastern Colorado, Oklahoma, Springfield, all responded. I was a new guy, and I was doing whatever Dal told me to. But I remember using school buses from Branson and Kim to transport the walking wounded. It was a catastrophic event, and coincidentally, Jay's mother, Jay Chmino's mother, was a passenger on that train, or whatever personal task, that attachment type, that might be. But all we wanted then, and all we needed, was medical services and transportation. In the course of the following twenty-nine years, I worked as a patrolman, and later a trooper in Waltham and Los Angeles Counties. I have occasions to respond to, investigate, and report on hundreds, if not thousands, of traffic crashes and other police-related activities that needed assistance from medical services and transportation. I made many death notifications. On two separate occasions, I notified the same woman, once to tell her her brother was killed in a blizzard while he was out working on a tow truck. And then about a year or two later, on Christmas morning, I made a notification that her daughter had been killed in a car accident. I prayed with the parents of, at the scene, of a son who had died in a rollover crash. They didn't know what to do. I didn't know what else to do, so we prayed together. I held the hands of people who I knew were dying, and I told them, hold on, EMS is coming. You're going to be fine, assuring them as best I could and comforting them. Using the limited equipment and basic first aid training, I rendered aid as best I could to the myriad of injuries that may have come my way until such time as medical services arrived. And then I relieved my responsibility to them. They were better tri- better equipped, better trained and better equipped to deal with it. At that time, all we wanted was medical services and transportation. I worked in, in what was then a developing ambulance district, with providers that included Mark Ritz, Renee Valentine, Sherry Linemeyer, and Chuck, I can't remember his name. That was the entire staff for that ambulance service, twenty-four seven. And they worked with what was a used Chevy Suburban, origin-wise, I recall. And they had their, I mean, their supplies procured or pilfered wherever they can from the hospital. They were struggling to provide medical transport and, and medical services and transportation. And that's all we wanted and needed. Recognizing the need for medical services and transportation, in nineteen eighty-eight, the citizens of our county, through the efforts largely of that ambulance crew, and Mark Ritz's efforts to establish an ambulance district, convinced the voters to attach a mill levy to every property owner's taxes, two point nine oh seven mills. This is most recent filing, the county treasurer's office is thirty-seven thousand, thirty-three thousand dollars short of a million dollars the taxpayers paid to fund the ambulance district. Two days, they have received of that nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars and nine cents, half, more than half of it, five hundred and thirty-nine thousand. Through the course of the next year, as we collect taxes, they will re, recover four hundred and twenty-six, four hundred and twenty-six thousand more. But the point I'm painfully trying to make is, all we wanted was medical services and transportation. The ambulance district grew, and EMS services became more professional, better equipped, better trained. They were housed in a new facility, and it was appropriate, we thought. So the voters approved DEBRUSI, which adds additional funds to that district. And the point I'm trying to make. And the point I'm trying to make again is, all we wanted was medical services and transportation. Now, and by the way, I have been provided with copies of the handouts from Mr. Monahan, Tactical Edge and the big national push towards deputizing and authorizing EMS people. I took it upon myself to contact the ambulance district in Las Vegas, Albuquerque, Santa Fe, Las Vegas, not Raton, not Trinidad, not Walsenburg, Pueblo, Canyon City, Colorado Springs, Castle Rock, three in Denver, Loveland, and Fort Collins. None of them have armed ambulance attendants. Many of them told me, and those who have the opportunity or the willingness to talk and discuss what he says, "That's not our job. Our job is to render medical aid." And the word Columbine is loosely thrown around. "Well, if we have a Columbine, we want to be prepared." That's BS. Let the police, who are better trained, better equipped, do their job. And you, who are better equipped and better trained to do medical services and transportation, do your job. It's foolish to think that an ambulance attendant's gonna charge a building with an active shooter and engage that person and then render aid. It's just not, it flies in the face of common sense. And I read Tactical Edge, I read the Journal of EMS Providers and EMS World, there are many articles. All you gotta do is Google armed ambulance attendants, and you'll see there's a myriad of information out there, most of which is not very supportive of that idea, of that concept. That having been said, all we wanted and all we need are medical services and transportation. EMS, as it now exists, is a far cry from Doc Jordan and Steve Comey showing up in that Cadillac that night my grandfather was dying. Words and phrases like, say, like Columbine are overused to justify poorly thought ideas and concepts like arming teachers and medical tech. And what are we gonna do? Arm National Honor Society students next? So that if everybody has a gun? That's part of the problem, in my opinion. In my opinion, it is also true that taxing districts and governments, city and county, need to be good stewards of the taxpayer money. We have what is a reasonably new constructed ambulance barn. I am told by rumor, and for persons who would know, that there's a push and flow to try and build a new one because it would incorporate an indoor gun range. Makes absolutely no sense to me, but I'm not in charge of things. I'm thinking, though, that there has to be some reasonable accountability to the taxpayers who pick up a bill to the tune of 2.907 mills on your tax bill. In my case, it's at $75. That's a huge amount, though, to somebody who doesn't make the money I make. By virtue of my retirement income and such. But my point I'm trying to make is, I believe that EMS personnel should be protected as they do their job, which they are trained and qualified to do. I support ballistic vests for them to not be injured or hurt or killed. But I'd be imminently opposed EMS from being armed because of myriad issues that are too involved at this time to discuss. Who's gonna be the armor? Is it gonna be uniformity and weapons? What about training? Now, it's one thing to be in a qualified range, but it's another thing to be peace officer certified. Peace officer certified, to know when to shoot and when not to. Decision shooting is a far cry, a step above, being able to shoot a gun straight and hit a target. And that having been said, this is the last for me at least, but I felt obligated to make that response when I was unable to at the last meeting. And I rest my case.
One question for you, you mentioned that those are additional dollars from the DEBRUSING. Do you know what that dollar amount was last year?
I do not. Yes, do you know? I didn't hear.
It's not in there anymore.
Okay. My report is this, last, I don't know, got thrown alive and today, places I've attended. Greg and I, were you there at that CU Leeds School Business for Startups?
Yeah.
At BRICS. And that was pretty nice, because I think they had like about 10 attendees that were going to be participating in that program. For people who want to kind of, if they want to start a business or if the business, they have to kind of make it better. So they went through an entire day on Saturday of instruction. And the CU Leeds School of Business is gonna be here for five years. I'll come once a year to help these people. But it's a program that for the business community that I think is really important. Jeff Peterson, as a matter of fact, is the person that I think is working with, with that group and trying to bring them here. We also had, Greg and I had, and Michelle, yeah, the space create update with the art space.
Right.
We attended that, they were down again on their monthly meeting. It was more of a construction meeting as to what, what they were doing and where they were at, so they are here, so.
The next one, you're only requesting that she, what, she's interested in what's going on inside, is that okay?
Sure.
Yeah, I thought it was very interesting. It's sort of a different language to me. And I didn't, I felt like a three-year-old's vocabulary, what was going on. But there were very animated discussions going on. There was a lot, you could just smell the creativity that was going on in that room as far as the problems they were facing. The mayor got involved in a very animated discussion about flash freezing or...
Yeah.
But I was like, you know, I was three. But a lot's going on, and it's, the team just seems very, very...
Yeah. This last Friday, Colorado Preservation Inc. was in town, and they had, I guess it was a board meeting here. And they had that at the back house, and then they had an event afterwards, and I attended. Greg, did you go to that too?
Yeah.
And I think you were there as well. And just a reminder, tomorrow, Randy Grauburger, who is our director for the Southwest Chief, is going to be doing the speech, or whatever you wanna call it, at the luncheon at the Chamber of Commerce. So any of those of you guys that want to hear what's going on with the Southwest Chief, he'll bring everybody up to stuff, what's going on there. And that's at noon time. Greg, one thing that I wanted to mention to you, this gentleman, this is the second time, actually the third time. He says that there's a continued smell coming from the sewer plant. So can you get, check into that and see what might be happening there?
Sure.
This was a question I had maybe for Cheryl. Greg, the refund check register was $3,888.49. I was just kind of wondering why it was so high.
May is settlement month for the camp reserve billing, which is the budget billing. We bill through May. If they've overpaid on their accounts, they will receive a refund. And we settle it up in the month of June.
Okay, alright. The other thing that we have talked about in the past, I'm not sure where this is at, Greg, is marking any of the streets in town that we have for bike trails. I'm not sure if there's something that, you're working on that, anything going on?
Usually that takes some sort of a study to make sure you're marking the right roads, those kind of things. And we definitely have a few roads in the streets in the residential areas that are more than wide enough to handle lanes like that.
Okay. I just wanted to bring that up to see what we need to do to... Is there any plan on moving on that? And of course, if it's another study, it's another dollar, and that's a problem.
Yeah, it's a little farther down the road than it's somewhere in the world.
Okay. The other thing, I've attended twice already, there's a, there's this Build Better Colorado. It's this group that has gone around to 35 communities, I believe, in the state of Colorado. And what they're doing is they're talking about the Tabor Amendment, the Gallagher Amendment, and Amendment 23. And how each one of those works and their approach as to whether they want to... They're doing, I think they're going to be on a ballot this year, or probably in 2020 for sure, for especially the Tabor and the Gallagher, because they know that those two items are questionable in what it's doing to the economics of the state. So whether you're pro or against it, you know, that's up to the individual. But I, that's something that they're going to be, they wanted to get input from all the different communities. And this last time, there were probably, I don't know, maybe 15 or 20 of us there. At Mount Carmel, this is a week ago. I also attended the Pueblo Chieftain Tour, not the tour itself, but the meeting that was there. And it was kind of neat to see John Pompeo, who's the writer for the Pueblo Chieftain. He's originally from here in Trinidad. And had a conversation, side conversation, I think it was good to see him here. But like you were saying, they're talking about maybe getting a section for Trinidad in the Pueblo Chieftain. I'm not sure if it's gonna be weekly or monthly or whatever. I could quite understand where you're going.
Nobody, nobody committed to it.
Right, I think it's just talking about it at this point in time. And this Korean Ambassador for Peace Medal event last Saturday that Karen and I attended. There were about 180 people in that room that night, that day. There were, it was over capacity. So if our chief would've been there, he would've been bringing people out. But you know, in my three and a half years that I've been as mayor, I would say that that is probably either the highlight or one of the major highlights of my tenure here off the edge as mayor. It was very emotional. There were commissioners there, I was talking to one of the commissioners, and he got choked up. I started to get choked up when some of these people were talking. And just to see the 27 recipients that were sitting in front of us, to look at them, to say, to think, what did they see during their, during the Korean War? What did they have to go through? Those people, when they were in their probably twenties, and no later than probably 25 years of age, were healthy men. And you look at them now, and there were three or four of them there that could already get up out of their chair.
They needed assistance.
They needed assistance. So to me, it was, to me, it was very emotional. And like I said, to me, I just, I just, I don't know. It was just something that I felt so honored even be there.
Yeah.
So, even at that. Karen, thanks for being there.
Sure.
Friday as well, the reason why I did participate in the Pueblo Chieftain, the actual tour, was Dana had brought down Harvey Productions, Power Place Film Interview. And this is going to be a documentary, documentary that's going to be national. They say it'll probably come out next year sometime. And from what I understand, they are concentrating on Chicago, Los Angeles, Oklahoma, and Trinidad.
Wow.
For Chicago, Los Angeles, Oklahoma, and Trinidad.
We can kick their butt. Freak it out.
Oklahoma and Oklahoma.
But I'm not sure what else to interview. I know my interview lasted a little over an hour.
Can you say why they were grouped? I mean, that's one of those companies.
Well, I think it's all had to do with Dana, because she asked me to do it. And then I think one of the commissioners also participated in the interview later on, and I'm not sure what was being said. But there again, it just shows the reach that Dana has for us, and also how much, you know, our name is getting out there in the country. And so that's interesting. I held the first meeting, I'll call back, I asked to try to talk to the chamber, the Main Street Craig District and Tourism. We sat down a little over a week ago and kind of had a discussion. And everybody's very interested, but we'll see where it goes, just to let you know. Today, the American Legion had a, there was a reporter that, he was a national reporter that was here, and there were probably 20 people at that grouping today. And this is, I guess, they're going to put an article, and they're going to also talk about Trinidad. And this goes out to 2 million members of the American Legion across the country. So they're going to highlight the Fort Worth. But they also have some international members too, so. And again, it shows how much reach that we're beginning to create here in Trinidad, so that's kind of neat. On Saturday at 11:00 AM, the Temple Iron is going to have some kind of a plaque ceremony. I guess they have a full weekend of events, it sounds like. So that's gonna be kind of neat. Any of you guys that want to attend, try to be there, it'd be kind of neat. On Friday, the 14th, there was elderly abuse day. I had to be in four places at the same time, so of course, of course, I couldn't get to all of them. What I did is, they had asked me to actually go, because I did it last year. But I did write a letter, you know, from city councils addressing elderly abuse day on Friday, so just to...
Lovely to trust them.
Interesting. What? You were there?
No, I'm abused. I'm the eldest of the bunch, so I...
Okay, you get it, will you start?
Okay.
On June the 24th, Colorado Funders will be in town. Do you know what time that is, Greg?
The tour is at 3:00 in the afternoon, and then they have a meeting the next morning at Mount Carmel.
Wait, tour is 3:00 PM?
3:00 PM.
Where do we meet?
I, it doesn't sound like they're gonna have any room on the bus, so to speak. They've got, I think, 28 places available, and they have 27 people signed up.
So anything that we can attend, if council wants to attend, if you can get some additional information?
Is there any, any, because I was contacted by some of the people on Colorado Funders just because of my involvement in space degree. And I went to that convening in Salida.
They have a dinner at 6:00?
Is there an event, a dinner? Is there a dinner?
Yes, there is a dinner, RSDP, and it's at 6:00 at...
I can't remember, I'll have to ask.
Wait, it's right here.
We have a work session there.
Oh, that's another problem, is on Monday, we have our work session.
Yeah.
It's the 24th Monday?
Yeah.
It's at 6:00, and then the meeting the next morning.
Yeah, they do have some stuff.
And then they're, they've also arranged to do a tour of the crazy French train.
Could you do the work session in 4:00 or 5:00? 4:00?
We'd have to... I know Mayor and I were both, were both asked to be on the tour. And that's gonna last for at least 3 to 5, I'm guessing.
Yeah.
Okay. But you said there's a meeting the next morning?
Yes, Mount Carmel.
What time?
8:00.
What time? It's 8:00?
Yes.
The next thing is, when Debbie was here a couple of weeks ago, you know, she talked about the interim committees that, at the Capitol. And I urged Debbie, one of us, to maybe look and see, and I think you already expressed an idea or a thought of maybe you wanted to participate. And stay in contact as to what's happening within these committees. And it could result in, maybe we may want to or have to, go to testify at the Capitol in Denver for a particular issue that maybe you're interested in. So take a look at those to see if there's anything that you feel like you want to participate in.
Do they, do they allow Skype in?
Yes. You can do that to college.
Okay.
Yeah. And, you know, Donna's not here, but she and I from, inside, not sure, whatever, who else was there that day, two weeks ago, when that Kaboom project was built. And Donna was there, and I was there. And that was really kind of cool, because there were, I don't think, 150 people that participated in that Kaboom project. And all I know is I mixed a hell of a lot of concrete that day with two of the commissioners. Because nothing was done mechanically. It was more of a team-building project than, let's just get it done. As a matter of fact, when I walked up to the project, there were two mounds, what I call mounds of mulch. And you would think that they would have had wheelbarrows or something, but they did actually use wheelbarrows sometimes. But they were actually using tars, getting two people filling the tars with mulch and carrying them to... And if you go out there, you can see, because it's about a foot deep of mulch. So, I mean, it's really a cool thing that they built. It's really deep. But, you know, they served breakfast, they served lunch, and just being able to sit there and work with these people on top of them afterwards was, was pretty cool. I do know that, I think Captain Baker from the fire department was there along with one of the other guys. I don't remember who it was. So there were a couple, there were a few of us from the city that were there, so it was, it was nice to see. I do have something here, and of course, like it says, this came from the Los Angeles County, a thank you for participating in the Kaboom project. So they did send us a note saying thank you for the, for our participation, so. That's all I have. Greg?
That dinner is at the Trinidad History Museum.
That what's that?
That's where it's at.
Which name?
For that.
Rural Punters?
Rural Punters.
I'll say it again, Trinidad History Museum.
Yeah, it's at the History Museum.
What time is that?
Six o'clock.
But we've got, what's going to work session?
Yes, it does. I just was letting you know that's where it's at. And then the next morning from eight-thirty to eleven-thirty at Mount Carmel for the breakfast and discussion.
So that's at six o'clock. Like, we'll have our discussion at, what time is it? Do we have to set a date? The work session?
Bye.
Would there be a reason why we couldn't do that for maybe to get away?
Unless I said Greg said it conflicted with your tour.
With our tour?
Yeah, unless you don't want to do the tour.
How many times you have to go off that bomb before you're satisfied? I mean, you've been up there fifteen times, haven't you?
The tour is downtown.
Oh, I thought you...
That's on Tuesday.
You've got a tour of this dispute with somebody, you said.
Yeah, that's on Tuesday afternoon.
I thought you had to go back up there.
Well, if they don't more than two hours, I'm sure the generals will be gone.
Now, would you add a cocktail hour and maybe people, maybe adding dessert and coffee? Okay, Greg?
I also did the Kaboom thing.
Yeah, you were there.
Doubled an awful lot of chips. And put together most of one of the pieces of equipment. We had a group of about ten or twelve people. It took us a long time to figure out how the screws fit in the holes because they didn't line up the first three times we tried it. And finally, we started making progress. It was going along really well. We really thumbed out one of the pieces that we shipped.
But that didn't work.
So we were one panel short by the time we quit. Next week, there'll also be a, I can't remember what the newspaper is, but there's going to be a reporter here who will also be visiting the Crazy French Range. And then tomorrow morning, and all day tomorrow, I have a meeting at the Kuchara Mountain Lodge for the Southern Colorado Mountain Bike Study. So the morning will be for the steering committee and then the afternoon is for any of the public who wants to provide input. And I think there are going to be several of those meetings throughout the process. If any of you would like to ride along with me, I think the meeting starts at nine o'clock.
I have one more item to add. I've had a couple of discussions and we'll be having another one with a retired editor of the Los Angeles Times. He was for the senior editorial staff. And I've worked with him. He was writing a book about Trinidad and Marcy and that whole era. And now he's been asked to do, and I was interviewed for it. And then he's been asked to do, and he's accepted the assignment, is to do a follow-up, but in an article form, on Trinidad. And he was talking about standing by, or Marcy, as being pioneers. And I said, well, the real pioneer is Sister Blandina. So, and he was very interested in her story. So anyway, he's going to be, I'm going to be, he's going to come down, spend the night at my house. And then I'm going to take them around for a couple, three hours. Is there a way I can incorporate the Trinidad trolley in that?
Probably.
Because I also want to involve people from the greater district. I think it's such a nice function. How do I do that? Who do I contact?
Work through Marty Hackett. If he wants to learn more about Sister Blandina, there's a book called On the Santa Fe Trail that she wrote. And it's pretty good.
Greg, would you be willing to meet with him? Your schedule is so busy, but, you know.
Let me go right in. Let me run it in, so we can talk to him.
Okay, that's all I have.
Anything else, Greg? That's it?
Thank you, Mayor Councilman. The only thing I want to, yes, one item, one item. I was going to joke and say I only have seventeen items in the world. No, the only item is the Hamer versus Trinidad lawsuit. And I, I'm sorry, but I feel a need for commenting on that again. And I, you know, there obviously has been a development that is that the Ten Circuit Court of Appeals did deny the petition for re here in the court of the whole court on bond. And I know that that has been mentioned rather widely in social media and other forums. So I just want to say, we will be having a conference call with our CERSA lawyers in the near future in deciding what the best course of action is. And if we can appeal to the United States Supreme Court, if CERSA will cover those expenses, then we will be considering doing that. If they're not going to, then our path forward is going to be pretty clear, I would say. And that is to accept the decision of the three judge panel and have the matter remanded to the district court for either a rehearing or a rebriefing the issues consistent with the opinion of the three judge panel in the Ten Circuit Court of Appeals. But I did, since I commented on this before, there has been development since and I felt inappropriate to update you on that in a public way. So that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Mr. Mayor, I was, you know, last night I was watching Channel thirteen news. I always watch Channel thirteen news. And there was an advertising on TV about Trinidad. And I always watch Channel thirteen news. But this is the first time I ever seen this advertising and it is pretty cool. This state, you know, showing commercial street and stuff like that. I'm just wondering where that...
That's on the tourism board.
Tourism is contracted. I mean, I never saw that before on Channel thirteen.
Tourism is contracted with PRD for a certain number of advertising.
That's true.
Oh, yeah. That's who you support the Trinidadian, so. We advertise the month so they can watch it.
Okay, there's nothing else? Motion to adjourn? Second? How about it?
Bernardo?
Yes.
Juddell?
Yes.
Rodrigo?
Yes.
Mate?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?